Please rise to the platform. Plenarum.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 2nd, 2018.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, Journal's approved. We have no bid openings tonight, so we'll move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so I'll move to Other Communications. Under Other Communications, item number one, Fifth District.
Receiving file, please.
So ordered.
Item number two.
Receiving filed same motion for item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receiving filed, County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, all districts.
Receiving filed, same motion to item number seven.
Item number eight, all districts.
Receiving filed, County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, Fourth District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number ten, Seventh District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
On the add-ons, under Other Communications, item number one.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, First District.
Received, filed, and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Report to the County Executive.
Nothing further, proceed.
Report to Special Committees.
Please hold on to your business.
So ordered. Public forum.
We have nine speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. When your name is called, please come up to the podium and adjust the microphone so we can catch your remarks and give us your name and address for the record. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Our first speaker this evening is Isora Liggins.
Good evening. My name is Isora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I guess I'll open up by saying I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. I'm sure that's something that's been echoed out here for a while. To Mr. Stinger, the last time I saw you, I gave you an email. You told me that you would respond to that email, and to date, I have not heard from your office or a response, so could you tell me just when I could expect to hear something from your office?
I'm not certain exactly what you're talking about, but I will look into what you're talking about and see what, you know, what the status of that is. I'm not really sure, as I sit here.
You don't remember me giving you the email here in the offi-- I mean, here at the County Council a few weeks ago? You said you would respond.
It may have been a few weeks ago, but I need to check and see if somebody responded or they didn't, or exactly what the status that is.
Okay, so I really hope by next Tuesday I can hear from somebody. I would appreciate that.
Be happy to do that.
Okay. And to this council, I gave you guys a chart last week, I mean, a couple of weeks ago. It showed you what fought upon the court looks like in my life. And I can't understand how anybody can expect a person to come before your courts and be faced with Judge Mary B. Schroeder and her husband, attorney Stanley Schroeder, and another family member, attorney Sherry Schroeder, and expect to get any form of justice when they are signing directly with the Boeing Corporation and District 837 in Hazelwood. So I think it's really kind of ridiculous to think that we could come before the courts or before this council or before our legislators and get anything done when nobody's actually following the rules. So again, I'm asking that you guys would make a recommendation to the prosecuting attorney's office so I can get in and speak to someone or to handle my situation. And I can't do it without you guys putting some paperwork or a letter or something. I'm just asking for due process, and I think that's fair. I don't think that any one of y'all would not expect due process. And it was interesting watching YouTube, and I saw the meeting last week, and that was very interesting where you were talking about labor and the exchange between Councilman Dolan, I think, and Councilwoman Erby. And I know what it's like to be treated poorly in your union and with your labor representatives because I am a 37 member of District 837. I have been affiliated with that union for the last 37 years, and they have not even stuck their head up to help me. And I think that's in North County. So we suffer in this county. We suffer in this county from many forms of racism and labor and police and you name it. It's our-- it's what we have to live with. But you guys can change all that. You can just do the right thing. That's all we're asking you to do. And this is just for, I would like to share this with Councilwoman Erby and Councilman Dolan. This is just for them to see what labor is like and what it really looks like to be discriminated against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Danny Eisenreich.
Greetings. We are here today representing a small group of mechanics from public works. We're assigned to St. Louis County Justice Center, and we are requesting the honorable council members and Mr. Stinger consider our assignment, working conditions, and involvement in daily operations of this facility to grant those employees a pay increase. We are not asking for all public work staff to get a raise, but the mechanics assigned to the Justice Center should. We are the only group in facilities management that has to work evenings, weekends, and holidays. During these work hours, we are not only taking care of the jail, but all other county dolans throughout the county. We deal not just with the public, but with the secretaries, judges, Justice Services staff, nurses, prosecuting attorney, public defenders, police officers, and of course, inmates on a daily basis. We're losing our experienced staff at a alarming rate because, excuse me, no raises and a plethora of higher-paying jobs on the outside. The people that are getting hired in are starting out at higher salaried than some people that have been here for years. Some of our lower-paid mechanics are required to train new hires even though they're making less money. Losing experienced mechanics at the jail will become more deteriorated and more dangerous place to work for everybody. There's nothing more important than the operations and security of such a doling. I'm sure any Justice Service administrator will agree, without our dedicated maintenance staff, our problems in the kitchen, laundry, plumbing, electric, heating and cooling, and also security will continue to increase. We will no longer have the staff to work in a correctional facility that is as complex as the Justice Center. The Justice Center has over 1,000 cells that house inmates with toilets that clog, sprinkler heads that break, and jail cell locks that malfunction along with the hundreds of slider doors. It takes a couple of years to get new employee trained, and they still have trouble with the complex security network. We only have a handful of experienced staff left. That is why we are asking public work staff assigned to Justice Center to get a raise so we can try to keep dedicated, knowledgeable mechanics.
That's three minutes.
On duty to maintain the security of the facility. This is the only-- this is one of the last buildings I would think that the operations security would want to be minimized or to deteriorate or be in a dangerous condition for all employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Zaki Verudi.
Good evening, councilpeople. My name is Zaki Verudi, and I'm representing the Universal African People's Organization. Before I give my remarks, I just wanted to echo what one of the previous speaker had made a statement on a historic note. "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." And that came from powerful human rights activist Fannie Lou Hamer. And I do that because I'm here, of course, as in past meetings, to call for a civilian oversight board and want to be a constant reminder, I'm taking a positive attitude. I'm taking a positive attitude because each of you know the kind of racial situation that has been existing here in this county, here in this state, and across America. And I'm sure each of you want to make a difference. So in making a difference, I challenge you to look at the model that we were able to implement in the city of St. Louis in terms of a civilian oversight board that now has subpoena power. And I say that in light of the fact that, as you all know from news accounts, of which also I've spoken to you about, there is a doggone shame that a St. Louis County Police Squad car chased another car in violation of the St. Louis County pursuit policy, out of which two gentlemen, a 49-year-old and a 59-year-old, were killed. And the car involved in terms of the chase turning its light off, keeping on going, didn't even have the decency to stop and check on the victims of the car crash. And after we had had a press conference denouncing that based on witnesses that we were able to find in that area in Berkeley, that a spokesperson for St. Louis County denied it was a chase, but had to change that when we found actual video that showed the chase. So I call upon you on a positive, and anybody else that's out here that does have some justice. And with that, it's quite obvious that the police cannot investigate themselves. We need an independent panel of civilians that provide oversight and help foreign policy as relates to policing. Too many times, we've been victims of police encounters, and so to that end, as Fannie Lou Hamer has said, as I started at the top of the hour, we are sick and tired of being sick and tired. So I challenge you, as I've been challenging you, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Clara, and the last name starts with a C.
Jesus, my name, Clara, Jesus. And I decided that I'm not going to speak tonight. I'm going to wait until next Tuesday.
And the next speaker is William Neal.
Yes, I'm William Neal, and I'm going to be the same.
And the next speaker is Arlene Hayes.
How are you, Arlene?
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Hayes. I stay at 7007 Idowell Avenue. I am here to address Ms. Hazel Erby. On behalf of the residents of better neighborhoods, I am requesting an application to be sent to Hillsdale on behalf of the St. Louis County-owned properties. I was told that there is no contract from Kathleen Jacob. There is no contract presently with Hillsdale concerning the St. Louis County-owned properties. In the process of going to get my inspection, I was just overwhelmed with the high debris, the vacant properties that was open, not boarded. And I was told when I went to the mayor's office that the majority of the properties was owned by St. Louis County. In the process of trying to get a list drawn up, the mayor stated that they had cut the properties and was not paid. So the underlying is, I try to come with a solution instead of the problem. I know that if an application has been filed with the St. Louis County concerning the properties that you all own, that you all will reimburse Hillsdale for cutting their-- your lots, your vacant properties, and boarded up. But we need that initiation to be presented and to be overlooked, if may. Also, there are some simple things as street signs not being visible or not even being present at all. And I'm speaking of the ones at St. Louis Avenue in Oakdale, St. Louis Avenue in Dover, and St. Louis Avenue in Edmond. So those are little simple things, and I think once we can move forward with that and start trying to get that resolved, then maybe we can build a little bit better on getting the community to work a little bit harder within their own community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Ren Draper.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ren Draper. I stay at 460 Chapel Ridge, Hazelwood 63042. I was here today just to, I guess, bring you up to speed on some things that we were trying to do to help the county save money. Last year, I was here in the summer when Councilwoman Wassinger, you were asking the transit system to find better ways to spend or to be better with the dollars that you guys give them. We, in fact, took from that meeting that as a charge to help the transit system to find ways to save money because I used to ride the transit system every day for work. For the last year, we have met with their executives, and the majority of the executives that we talked to were very excited about the different solutions that we brought to them. From last year to this year, we offered them a way to save almost $10 million in operating costs, and we offered them a way to increase their revenue by almost $2.5 million. The particular gentleman, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, I'm looking for a way to have you guys help us because some of the offerings that we made for them, we'd like to present to you all to stop situations like the gentleman from Parks and Recreation needing to have extra money for you guys to do other things with. I know Councilwoman Gray, you wanted to give raises to people last year. We have solutions to do that. The particular gentleman with whom our project is on his or her desk told me to my face with witnesses that because we're offering so many ways to save money, that the particular entities that fund the transit system, St. Clair County, St. Louis City, and you all, St. Louis County, if we start saving money in those increments, you guys would in fact cut their budgets. As a taxpayer, I'd like with you all, and I'm sure with the rest of the room, see them to do more with the dollars so they can provide more service to the residents. That's the reason that we presented the solutions in the first place. I'm asking for a hearing to explain to you guys everything that we offered them and to make an offer to the county for some of the same services for the same dollars on a guaranteed contract that would put you all in a position to receive any type of refund at any point with which we would fail the county. That is why I'm here. I can give this to you, Councilman Page.
Sir.
There are letters in there from people in the county who know us, residents who will vouch for our character, ministers that know us, people that we've done business with, who we've saved money for. And I can further explain everything else to you all if we can have 30 minutes of your time to go through everything. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. First, I think the council looked pretty silly withholding the funds from Metro. They're acting like a parent unable to control their child. I will say again, there is no other area where the council is more irresponsible than when it comes to the oversight of Metro. Last week, there was a discussion about increased opportunities by changing procurement requirements, yet there was no concern for those unable to get jobs because Metro is the fifth worst transit agency in the country when it comes to access for residents who don't own cars. Another area where I believe the council has been irresponsible is putting the zoo tax on the ballot. You didn't even do basic due diligence. This tax is now being promoted with a lot of money and a lot of dishonesty. It seems Jeffrey Bonner will say anything to pass it, and the media doesn't challenge him. Yesterday's story in The Post Dispatch left out a lot of relevant information. Yet another way this council can be irresponsible is approve the plan to upgrade the convention center. More county tax dollars down a rabbit hole while so many needs in St. Louis County go unmet. This proposal needs to go to voters. When the dome was originally sold to county voters in 1990, it was said it would be a huge tax revenue generator. It would revitalize downtown St. Louis, provide thousands of new jobs, and generate many millions of dollars every year for local governments. Today, downtown St. Louis doesn't have a single department store. The shopping center down the street from the dome went broke, and the convention hotel across the street, which required tens of millions of dollars of subsidies, went belly up. The bondholders that foreclosed on the hotel had a study done about the convention business in downtown St. Louis. It said downtown, quote, "lacks the demand drivers needed to attract significant tourists and groups." It ranked St. Louis 23 of 25 cities in a measure of hotel revenue. These are things the CVC people don't tell you. And today, the city of St. Louis, after being in the convention business for decades, is more broke than ever. City can't even collect the trash. All the promises made for the dome and the convention business have been false. The 2004 St. Louis County voters passed Proposition A by an incredible margin, 72% in favor. This was a plurality of more than 200,000 votes. Proposition A was a charter amendment that requires voter approval of any funding for sports stadiums. Similarly, voters should have a say on whether funding for the dome should go to upgrade the convention center. Let the voters decide was the argument for the zoo tax. It should also apply to funding for the upgrade of the convention center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Iva Kay.
I'm an Efton resident, and I'm here to ask you to not rezone there with Tower T, not Higgy. I don't want to see Tower T tore down and more houses built. I just live off of Higgy. And if they build those houses, they say the taxes may go up. I'm 87. I can't pay no more taxes. Plus, I think McBride and Barra ought to be ashamed. Yogi Barra entertained us for years, and he was raised on Barra Hill. On the Italian hill. And I'm sure he played ball in Barra Park. How many places is for the young to learn ball and play miniature golf now? I want to save that. And I am also a cousin to Carmen Barra, Yogi's wife. He signed this for me at a family reunion. Carmen took this picture of me and Yogi. And so they, when she died, they said how much of a lady she was and how much she did for the young. I have her death notice and from Salem paper where her parents lived in this envelope. Yogi worked with kids, Carmen worked with kids. Barra ought to be ashamed. And I may go on the hill and tell the Barres who I am and what relation I am and tell them to honor Yogi by keeping.
It's three minutes.
A place for the young and the seniors to go play golf. I guess my time is up, but I, I just want to say, there's so many gangs and kids that are delinquent. We want to keep someplace where they can go and have a training and a life to be good citizens, as I'm sure yous were because you're working with the city and the state. I voted every election since I was 18 years old, and I'll be here to vote in the next one. But Doug Beck, I am definitely voting for him. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. This is the first time I've ever been before anything like this. I am a citizen of this state, and I am a taxpayer, and so I think that everyone should worry about the young and the seniors and everyone in between. And Yogi was. We were, Carmen and I were cousins on my mother's side and my father-in-law's side. Her mother was my father-in-law's sister, and her father was my mother's. Her mother was my father-in-law's sister, and her father was my mother's cousin. That made me relationship.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This concludes our public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number two fifty, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, accepting a grant of up to three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars in the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development for a summer job leadership program, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to one million, two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for Women, Infants, and Children's Supplemental Food Program, appropriating funds, providing for two additional program years, and authorizing the county executive to execute related documents. Bill number two fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Harder and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract for lease of a three-point-five-five-six-acre parcel of land at Spirit of St. Louis Airport with Truman Arnold Companies, and authorizing termination of the lease for the same parcel authorized by ordinance number nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one. Bill number two fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Harder and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a fuel sales contract and up to three subsequent renewals with the West County EMS and Fire Protection District. Bill number two fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, declaring the public necessity of providing for the replacement of bridge number four hundred and for widening and establishing a section of public road designated as Teshire Drive, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents. Bill number two fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Beolia ES Technical Solutions LLC for facility management and hazardous material disposal compliance in St. Louis County Hospital Hazardous Waste Facilities. Bill number two fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, amending Chapter two oh two, Title II, St. Louis County Advice frozen since nineteen seventy-four as amended Personnel Classified Service by repealing and reenacting Section two oh two point three sixty-six pertaining to a new pay range structure. Bill number two fifty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, establishing the Office of ADA Coordinator within the Department of Administration. Bill number two fifty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray and ordinance, directing the Board of Police Commissioners to provide for the posting on an appropriate police department website of information pertinent to the establishment of a civilian review board requiring same of St. Louis County. Bill number two fifty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Dolan and ordinance, authorizing Director of Revenue as trustee to grant a temporary construction easement to the city of Webster Grove on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the August nineteen seventy-three tax sale for bridge replacement and improvements to Marshall Avenue. Bill number two sixty, introduced by Councilmember Page and ordinance, amending Title I, Chapter one oh nine, St. Louis County Advice frozen since nineteen seventy-four as amended Department of Information Technology by adding and enacting a new section pertaining to agreements with cellular providers for redirection of calls to the two-one-one call center. Bill number two sixty-one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance, amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district map by changing the boundaries of the R four Residence District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application of preliminary plans as amended. The development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions, PC twenty-one dash eighteen, J and R Meyer LLC. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number one ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Bill number one ninety-one is held.
Bill number two oh two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Moved hold, bill number two oh two, and two oh two is held.
Substitute bill number one, bill number two oh eight, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Substitute bill number one for bill number two oh eight is held.
Bill number two twenty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Moved hold, bill two twenty-one, we are working on a substitute.
Bill number two forty, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number two forty.
Second.
All in favor of perfection of bill number two forty?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries, bill number two forty is perfected.
Bill number two forty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Bill number two forty-three is perfected.
Bill number two forty-four, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number two forty-four is perfected.
Bill number two forty-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number two forty-five is perfected.
Bill number two forty-six, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number two forty-six is perfected.
Bill number two forty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number two forty-seven is perfected.
Bill number two forty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, bill number two forty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, bill number two forty-eight is perfected.
Bill number two forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Mr. Chair, I may have a moment. As the members of the council know, I had prepared a substitute bill for bill number two forty-nine tonight. However, I was informed after the bill was circulated that the attached contract to original bill two forty-nine was not, in fact, the contract that was finalized. And so I only obtained that, copied that contract late in the day, so I would ask that the chair hold this bill on the order of business so that I can circulate that contract and submit a substitute bill next week.
Okay, so you have, this is the collective bargaining agreement for the forensic staff in the police department?
That's correct.
And you have the updated collective bargaining agreement?
Correct. And the substitute bill simply removes any vagueness with respect to what contract is attached to the legislation, so that the council will know exactly the terms of the agreement that we're being asked to approve.
Okay, so you could circulate that, and then we could perfect this next week, then?
Yes.
And keep everything on schedule? Okay. Everybody understand that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Moved hold, bill number two forty-nine, and two forty-nine will be held.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Moved hold, bill two fifty-three, and two fifty-three is held.
Bill number two thirty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of two thirty-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two thirty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two thirty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number two thirty-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two thirty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two thirty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of bill number two thirty-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two forty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-two, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger?
I move for final passage of bill number two forty-two.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two forty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-two, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger?
I move for final passage of bill number two forty-two.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number two forty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-two is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have one this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Ida number one, third district?
Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Ida number two, seventh district?
Please hold. So ordered.
Ida number three, second district?
See file in the extended hours be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ida number four, third district?
Receive, file in the new liquor license be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have nothing under new business this evening, Mr. Chair.
Any comments, lady councilmembers? Yes?
Just want to remind everybody that the airshow is this weekend at Spirit Airport, and it's also supporting STEM in our community, and all the money goes to STEM programs in the St. Louis city and county area. So it's looking to be a great show. We don't have the Blue Angels, but there are a lot of other attractions this year, so. Go.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yesterday, I attended the St. Louis County Transportation Commission meeting. Metro was there, and we had a nice discussion about their progress and coming up with proposals for the Securitas contract. They only extended it through the end of January, which I did not know. So they're trying to think about different ways on how to handle security as well. In addition, they said the production of the security study is moving on as scheduled, and we should have it in early December.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Okay. Motion for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for adjournment. Thank you.